All right. Good evening. I call this October 20th, Samamish Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I'm going to start out with roll call. Jerry Norman. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
TC Labby.
Present, virtually.
Josh Hamato.
Here.
I am Mark Baughman, and I'm here. And John Bachman, I believe, is not present and has an excused absence. Great. Thank you, everyone. Let's do the meeting accessibility statement.
The public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801 to 28th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments: Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes if representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To give public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link To get public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: us+1-253-215-8782. Webinar ID: 82822648794.
Thank you, Julian. Next is approval of the agenda. Any comments about tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll call the agenda approved. Approval of the minutes from our October 6th meeting. Did anyone note any changes or corrections from the minutes of the last meeting? All right, we'll call the minutes approved. Next is non-agenda public comment. So let's go ahead and see if we have anyone for non-agenda public comment.
And we have one hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Paul Stickney, Samamish. Well, I'm excited. This is the last day, hopefully, of spoke and rain coming in to get out of this scary, dry weather we've been in. As an aside, Mary Wichter and I spent a couple hours on Sunday driving all of the George Davis Creek, from its headwaters down to where it goes over the hill, and looking at where all the stream flows are and everything. It's going to be interesting to monitor that once the rain starts. And I did talk to Mary today. I know she can't make it to the meeting tonight, but I know she plans to check out the agenda packet and catch up on the meeting later. My non-agenda comment is a little bit more about the Sustainability and Action Series that's been at the Central Washington University. They had their second class on Monday, which was very interesting about investing in companies that makes social responsibility and environmentalism a core, and how those companies tend to do well when the market goes down. It was just kind of interesting. But from two weeks ago, I guess now, a couple of points I did not talk about two weeks ago in my meeting here with all of you, a couple of facts stood out at me. There were two excellent presentations, just unreal that first time. And these are things I did not know. Our world, now I'm taking what the presenter says as fact. I can't prove that his presentation is accurate or not. But he talked about that our resources, the human population, is overshooting the use of resources 73% faster than they're being replenished. That was kind of eye-opening. And the shift happened roughly in about 1970. So before 1970, we were using less than could be replenished, and after 70 more. Very interesting. The other thing that I caught is the nature of environmental science. More on that in just a minute. They have this wonderful sheet in here. I'm not going to leave it up long, but it shows that there's like 15 or 20 scientific parts that they have identified. And in environmental science is an interdisciplinary pursuit. And the last part is that they talk about in environmental science is a study, like facts, where environmentalism are social movements and ideologies. And I think that's an important distinction. Facts and ideology, they are tied together, but they are separate. And here's the last thing. I saw a presentation from King County Assessor John Wilson, and although property values are up 23%, the actual taxes in Samamish are forecasted to go up on a median house about 13% from about $8,900 to $10,100. And that's all I have today. I'll chat with you guys later.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and we have no more hands raised.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to our regular agenda items. We have an old business item and a new business item. Start now with the old business item, which I presume will take up a fair amount of time this evening. We're going to have a presentation on the Housing Action Plan update, and then probably some discussion. So who's going to start out and introduce this? Is that you, Miriam?
Yes. Give me one moment to share my screen. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Miriam Leitner. I'm the city's planning manager overseeing long-range planning, and I'm joined here tonight by our consultant, Elliot Weiss, from Community Attributes, also known as CAI. Tonight, we're going to be sharing the results of the Housing Needs Assessment that CAI completed for the Housing Action Plan Grant, which was awarded to the city by the Washington State Department of Commerce in late 2021. Just as a reminder, the Housing Action Plan Grant aims to encourage a variety of housing types and housing at a variety of price points to expand housing choices within the city. Tonight, we are sharing the Housing Needs Assessment Report. The report that's included in your packets is the final version, which was provided to the Department of Commerce per our grant contract. We think you'll find really that none of the findings of the Housing Needs Assessment are much different from what you've already heard and what you already know about housing here in Samamish. Our focus here tonight is to give you the opportunity to learn more about and build your understanding of the results so that you feel prepared for what we think is really the more exciting part of the project, where Planning Commission really plays a critical role, which is the identification and the selection of housing strategies. CAI will be starting to put together a list of potential strategies based on the findings of the Housing Needs Assessment. This list will be shared with the public and with key stakeholders to get their input in late November and early December. And we'll then be bringing that same list, along with the summary of the feedback received, to the Planning Commission and City Council in January. At this time, we'll be asking for your help narrowing down and refining the strategies. And then these strategies will be used to develop the draft Housing Action Plan, which we'll be bringing back to the Planning Commission for review and feedback in March of 2023. To inform the needs assessment, CAI disseminated a statistically valid survey for Samamish residents, as well as an open survey for all community members. They also held three roundtable discussions focused on specific housing topics, and short online engagement activities were also posted to provide a different way to engage. In addition, CAI completed an extensive data and policy analysis, and the results of all of this work have been integrated into the Housing Needs Assessment Report that you have in your packets tonight. So with that, I'm going to hand things over to Elliot so he can talk more about the assessment. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Miriam, and thanks, Commissioners, for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. A little louder is always better.
I'll do my best. I did not want to give you a deluge of charts and graphs. Those are all in the packet materials, but I did want to summarize some of the major demographic and economic findings as they pertain to housing. So we're going to run through a few of those quickly, and then we're going to talk about how we transitioned from this analytical phase, where we're really looking at the data, to a strategic phase, where, as Miriam said, we look forward to engaging you on deciding what strategies might make sense for Samamish to pursue. A few of the things that we're seeing in the data, especially as we look at the last decade or so of available data, is that Samamish is becoming more diverse. The non-white population has increased, particularly among Asian Americans. Samamish is known as a community where families predominate, and that continues to be true. It's upwards of 85% of households in Samamish that are family households. The portion of the population 65 years and older in age is increasing, and that's a regional trend. That's a county-wide trend at a minimum, but I suspect much broader. The data in the report show King County data and Samamish data, and they're tracking in the same direction, if at a different rate. But certainly, the population of King County and Samamish is aging. Economic disparities seem to be growing. So Samamish is a wealthy community, but the gap in household income amongst renters and owners has been diverging a bit. Both are increasing, but not at the same rate. And as a result, there are some residents that are at increased risk of displacement, and indeed, the survey findings back this up to some extent with some portion of the population saying that they either know someone, or they themselves have experienced concerns about their ability to cover their housing costs. Samamish's regional economic role, I think a lot of people have spoken of it as a bedroom community, and the jobs-to-housing-units ratio, which is just one measure that sort of comes to bear on this idea of being a bedroom community versus a job center, does show that Samamish has relatively few jobs relative to housing units. So it's a residential community by and large, but nonetheless, there are strong regional ties to the economy for Samamish. So 86% of workers in jobs that are located within Samamish come from outside the city to work. So of all the jobs located at businesses in Samamish, only 14% of those workers also live in Samamish. Fully 60% of Samamish residents commute to one of three other cities, and there are more that commute to other cities throughout the region, of course, but Seattle, Bellevue, and Redmond capture 60% of Samamish residents. And I should just state that those are resident workers, right? It's not five-year-olds that are commuting to other locations, of course. It's people with a job. These are adults who are in the workforce. But of those people who are in the workforce and do hold jobs, a vast majority of them commute outside of Samamish, and a majority of them commute to one of these three other cities. And then almost half of the residents that responded to our survey live in a home where at least one person works remotely. So that's another unique aspect that is persisting, you know, nearly three years on from the beginning of the pandemic, where remote work is still a factor for the city of Samamish, as it is for many other cities in the region. We analyze data on the housing stock in Samamish. So what types of housing units do you currently have? A few of the findings that popped out are that a lot of the homes in Samamish were built during the same period of time. About 58%, almost 60% of Samamish homes were built in the two decades between 1980 and 2000. No surprise to anyone, Samamish is predominantly a single-family community. About 87% of housing units in Samamish are detached, single-family homes. 12%, that's a very low number compared to the community of housing unit, or compared to the region, I should say, the county of housing units in Samamish have fewer than three bedrooms. So they're very large homes on average, and they're rather expensive. 91% of homes are valued at greater than $500,000 compared to 60,000, or I'm sorry, 60% countywide. One thing I ought to point out about this particular data is that in order to look at this across time, it's helpful to use data from the Census Bureau, because the American Community Survey is collected every year, year over year, and so we can track that back. But it's not always the leading indicator of market value. And so in the report, you would have seen some data from Redfin that tracked median sales price, which accelerated rapidly in 2021 and into 2022. And you'll see that $500,000 is actually far below the median sales price, according to Redfin at this point in time. That median sales price, as you see in that last line, exceeded $1.8 million in 2021, or by Q4 of 2021. So, Samamish does not plan for housing in a vacuum. Of course, we aim to take into account all of the unique local circumstances, but according to policy requirements from the state, the Department of Commerce, and from King County, Samamish has to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments, promote a variety of residential types, housing unit types, and residential densities, encourage the preservation of existing housing stock, report on what the city is doing in order to meet those goals, to provide housing and to increase affordability and diversity in supply of housing units, to demonstrate how local policy is linked to city, county, regional, and statewide housing efforts, and to provide the housing units necessary to meet statewide projections. In other words, when you get an allocation under these various planning frameworks, you have to show that your development regulations, the adopted code, can accommodate those units that have been allocated. So, the central question of a Housing Needs Assessment is, what is the housing need for Samamish specifically? And this is a balancing act. There are the policy requirements that I just spoke to on the previous slide, but then there are also the community needs and preferences. So we talk about the unique characteristics of Samamish, of aging at a faster rate than the county, of the preferences of residents expressed in the survey about potentially wanting to downsize, but still having a preference for the character that currently exists in Samamish, of looking for things like starter homes, so that youth who maybe grew up in Samamish and are returning after school or returning to pursue career opportunities have an opportunity to find housing, and balancing that with, you know, infrastructure needs and other considerations here, and how Samamish chooses to grow and develop. So Samamish's housing need is a complex calculation that has to reflect all of these various priorities and requirements. As Miriam said, we will be pivoting here. The Housing Needs Assessment is a data-driven piece of work that, you know, we look to see what the data can tell us about changing demographics, about the existing housing stock, about any disconnects that exist between the two. We look at the various planning frameworks that Samamish is planning under, but all that rolls up into an assessment of needed housing types in order to accommodate future growth. And we now are going to start looking at strategies that can help the city meet those needs. And so these are not the only six buckets that we will evaluate, but these are six buckets that come to mind in terms of the types of strategies that we'll be bringing to you for evaluation and for feedback over the coming months. There are changes to your underlying zoning. That could be re-zonings of land. That could be changes to the allowable densities in any given zone. It could be any number of things that change about those underlying zones as currently adopted. Even absent zoning changes, we could look at changes to development regulations. If we're talking about infill opportunities that are sensitive to context, but yet might add density, then we could look at something like cottage housing, and we could say, in which zones is it feasible? And even if it's allowed by right in a certain zone, do certain things like setback requirements practically preclude somebody from putting in a cottage housing development? That's just an example, not a proposal, but your development regulations are certainly something that we would look at in terms of strategy buckets for meeting the identified housing need. We could talk about requiring certain housing types in certain zones or under certain programs. So housing affordability certainly is an issue, and it's coming largely out of HB 1220, and is filtering down through King County. You'll now be required to plan for housing at various income levels, as deemed by a percentage of AMI. Could you require certain percentages of affordable housing? Or could you just adopt a mixed-use requirement in certain zones where, you know, it's predominantly commercial on the ground floor, but now we're going to ask for housing above the commercial uses? Again, just hypotheticals, but requiring certain housing types, or certain housing affordability levels, or housing in certain places, is something that we could explore. Certainly, public-private partnerships can be fruitful in this regard, whether through development agreements, or disposition of city-owned land, or any number of models that are out there and that have been practiced in the Puget Sound region. We can look at what, if any, might be appropriate for Samamish. Incentives or subsidies for the development of needed housing types are a bucket of strategies we could evaluate, and that we will walk through with you in future meetings. I think maybe the most common one throughout the region would be, like, use of the multifamily tax exemption program, MFT program, which is statutorily enabled at the state level, and offers a property tax rebate or exemption for development projects for a specified number of years if they agree to include units at certain affordability levels as determined by your regulations. So the city of Samamish gets to determine what those requirements would be. And then other financial tools, I mean, things that, ways that you could bring in certain revenue sources or revenue streams that would help to fund the creation of housing units that are determined to be necessary to meet Samamish's future housing need. Again, not an exhaustive list, not a proposal for anything specific, but the types of tools that could be on the table if you all together deem them to be appropriate as avenues of meeting the identified need in Samamish. So these kind of are our next steps. There's more outreach to be done. Miriam talked about some of what we've done so far with the community roundtables, with the surveys. That was a big push to inform the Housing Needs Assessment, but we have different forms of outreach planned for the months of November and December that are going to help to inform the strategies that we might take forward. Part of those are targeted technical interviews with folks in the commercial real estate community to help understand feasibility challenges in Samamish with certain housing types, but also outreach to the broader community at large to understand which strategies the community feels most comfortable with pursuing, given certain housing types that may be needed in the future. I already spoke to the strategies. That's something that will sort of begin to roll out at a high level in November, but will filter down to something more specific or more focused, or something that resonates with Samamish public and Samamish leadership as we move into December and January. And then from there, we will identify the highest priorities and write those into your Housing Action Plan, which will also summarize the Housing Needs Assessment. It will be a cohesive document. It will include implementation tools, like metrics, to help staff understand how they're tracking towards the goals that have been identified. And then the process where we finalize the Housing Action Plan will be one of adoption with City Council, as recommended by the Planning Commission, by June of 2023, which is when this project has to wrap up by. So this just lays out some of the dates in accordance with that previous slide, where we'll be coming back either to you all as a commission or to the City Council. We're here on October 20th. On the left, we'll be going to City Council to present some of the same information on November 8. The strategies, we'll bring an update to you in January, the 19th for the Planning Commission, and the 10th for City Council. By March, for the Planning Commission, we'll have a draft of the full Housing Action Plan for your review, comment, et cetera, and that will go to City Council in May, before a public hearing before the Planning Commission in April, and in June for City Council. So these are a few questions that we have for discussion, and we're happy to take any additional questions, of course, that are out there, but I'll just rattle these off quickly. Does the Commission understand state, regional, and county housing mandates and their relationship with local needs? So this is sort of the planning frameworks question. What stands out in the information presented in the Housing Needs Assessment? Are there questions about the data being presented? And what questions does the Commission have regarding the next steps in developing a Housing Action Plan? This is sort of the work in front of us here over the next several months.
There's a pause there, Elliot. I'm assuming you're not just going to the next slide. You're waiting to see if we have questions?
Yeah, I was about to clarify. I will pause here and take those questions. I don't have any further slides unless there's specific questions. We've got some of the data in reserve if we want to set eyes on it. We don't have every exhibit that was presented in the Housing Needs Assessment, but I think the intent was to begin the discussion here.
Great. I will just take privilege here and start out by saying that I think that I appreciate your work on this, and that I think we probably all recognize that housing is one of the core issues for Samamish, and has been for years, if not decades, and is likely to be the same thing in the future. And we all have the same goal of making improvements, and it's a struggle. So I hope everyone will kind of keep that in mind as we dive into this dense, deep topic. So what questions do folks have about the report and the data and things that Elliot might be able to answer? And TC, you'll have to, you'll have to probably just interrupt or do something if you have a question. Yeah, if you, Julian, if you drop the presentation so we can see people, then I'll see if TC wants to speak. Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great. Elliot, I wondered if you wouldn't address the little bit about the survey. You know, it said 8,000 homes were selected, and I'd like to understand, one, how you randomly selected the 8,000 homes? And I wondered if you guys would provide a GeoMap of where those homes are between now and as we go along and discuss these things. And it seems to me that if, unless I misunderstood, the survey was opened to the people that received a postcard, and they could go online and complete it. But I didn't see online any control to keep anybody from going in and filling out a survey or 200 surveys. And that sampling sizes are extremely small, 400 out of one group and 460 out of another, that might be part of the same group. So I wondered what kind of filtering and controls did you have in place to assure that you're getting, you know, data that's not corrupt?
I'm happy to speak to that to the extent that I can. I will just note, we did bring on a subconsultant that focuses on primary market research in order to handle the survey. We wanted to make sure that we were employing methods that could ensure statistical validity, and so we thought it best to bring in experts in that primary data collection space. The firm that we contracted with is GMA Research, and I know that they are willing to make themselves available to answer some of these more technical questions. If my answers tonight don't suffice, what I can tell you is that we were able to control for duplicate responses on the backend by identifying things like IP address. I don't know that that was the only one that they checked for, but they did flag any duplicates on the backend that had similar markers of identity. I can also say that the number of responses received were sufficient to achieve a 95% confidence interval in the results. You also asked a question about how the addresses were selected, and I can't tell you exactly which program was employed. What I can tell you is that we began with a full list of Samamish addresses, every residential address, as given to us by the King County Assessor, and from there, a random sample was generated. So that's, that's sort of the source of the data that we used. I just don't know what program was used to select randomly. So I'm happy to backfill those responses by engaging GMA in this, but that's my understanding of some of the procedures that were in place to ensure the validity of the survey results.
Thank you. As part of a follow-up for that, could, could I just reach out to you after the meeting over the next few days? And, and maybe you could pose those questions to the, the company that did the work?
I'm happy to do that. I would defer to Miriam and other staff at Samamish about how they'd like to process or aggregate those questions, but I'm happy. But I'm happy to, to handle those follow-ups, of course.
Thanks very much.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Elliot, thank you very much for the presentation. And then in the report, you posed several questions for us. The first one about the, our understanding of how housing mandates and their relationship to local needs. So I've got a couple of questions related to that. And under HB 1220, it talks about reasonable measures to accommodate growth targets. So I'd like you to elaborate a little bit on that. So, and I view that as part of how our relationship with the mandates work, so. And then I have a follow-up to that that's somewhat similar. So if you can address that one first, please.
This may be one where I'd defer to David, if David's available. I can speak a little bit to it, but I don't have as much practical experience that would be reflective of the Samamish experience, of course, as David does. So David, is this one that you could take?
Sure, yeah. So I, I, I think what we're looking at is a process by which King County is now entered into the comprehensive plan certification process where they will be evaluating whether or not we have adequate policy that gives us direction and adequate code provision that facilitates and it doesn't obstruct construction of affordable housing. We're not required to build it. We're required to demonstrate that we're not a barrier to it being built. We're required to show that we have set up an environment that is friendly to it and will help facilitate it. If it's not built and we are required to report out on our success, and if it's determined that we're not meeting the benchmarks that they want us to meet, then we will likely have to revisit it and revise our comprehensive plan and revise our development regulations again. And we will go through that cycle until such a time as we are actually starting to see these units being built in the city. So it's one option that we have that we are very interested in, and we will be bringing this back to the planning commission, to the council, is we would like, what, King County has offered that some cities can participate in what they're calling a pilot program where we can work with King County early to ensure that the policies and the code changes that we're making are judged as adequate by the county. And this would be helpful because what we don't want to do is end up in a process where, by which where we have gone through our, are putting a lot of effort into our comp plan update and analyzing our code and changing our code. And we get to the end of the process and we present our code, our, our comp plan and our code to King County, and King County says, no, this is not consistent with county-wide planning policies and is not going to likely achieve the 1,400 units of 0 to 30% AMI that we're requiring you to build in your city. And then they will send it back to us and we will have to then restart that process. So we're, we're wanting to engage the county early. We see the county likely as the most complex part of the certification process with this cycle of comprehensive plan update and want to make sure that we understand what they're looking for and we understand and can report back to the commission and the council and the public what we're doing with our comprehensive plan and why we're doing it. So it's really important to, to, to think about it from that angle that we're, we're not required to build it. We're required to make sure that our, our, our policies and our codes are not a barrier to and are creating an environment in which this type of housing is, is being facilitated for its construction. I hope that helps.
It, yeah, so actually, I'll, that was a nice summary at the end because what I take out of that is reasonable measures is ensuring that we're not putting barriers up to the construction of more affordable housing. And actually, I'd mentioned I'd had two questions. You partly answered the second one, but I do want to mention it. So in the, in the report, it talked about the six goals related to housing. And one of them talked about actively participating and coordinating with other agencies to meet regional housing needs. And so David, I guess part of what you were saying is working with the county to make sure that what we're doing is going to be acceptable. But another part that I wondered about, since there are relatively few jobs in Samamish and limited, limited sustainable transportation. And, you know, part of the goals we're talking about locating housing close to jobs, close to transportation. And I, I recognize that the targets for the more affordable housing are being set or have been set. But it seems that those goals run counter to the type of community that Samamish is and what's available in our infrastructure, both from a job standpoint as well as the transportation standpoint. So are there negotiations or, you know, trading, if you will? Because there's a lot of housing going up in Redmond, not all that far from the north end of the plateau for people that might be working, say, in, you know, Safeway, for example, that you can actually get to as quickly as you could if you're on the south end of the plateau. So I view that as a possible way of working in cooperation with other communities. Can you comment on?
So, yeah, so we've had these conversations in regional settings with the, the King County Planning Directors Meeting that we have once a month, for example, and, and in other forums. And, and I, I've, I've raised the same question about Samamish's character and how Samamish, if you recall from our last meeting, we talked about the Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050 and how Samamish fits into the cities and towns category and what the typical attributes are to a city that fits in the cities and towns category. So one of the issues is, is that Samamish does not have a lot of jobs, like you raised. We don't have a, a high job target, I think 728 jobs or something like that. So we don't anticipate taking a large number of jobs on either in this planning horizon. However, Samamish is recognized as having reasonable proximity to regional job centers like Redmond, Microsoft, Bellevue, Issaquah, where there are many jobs available. The one big problem that I think the council has hit on and you've raised is we don't have transit in the city. And that also speaks to our, our being categorized in the cities and towns category. So we've asked King County this question, and, and King County has, has said, and I've raised the question that, you know, does it make sense to place affordable housing in the 0 to 30% AMI range in a location that necessitates owning a car? Given that, that a car is a major expense? And if you're now talking about putting affordable housing that then requires somebody to have an additional household expense just to get to their job, does that make sense? And, and the answer was, well, everybody needs to do their part and Samamish needs to do its share. If you look at the dashboard that I sent out at the last meeting, the Tableau dashboard, you'll start to see that some other cities that actually have real reasonable proximity to transit, like, and I don't mean to pick on any city in particular, if anybody's watching this video, but C-TAC is a good example. C-TAC is targeted to build a high number of 120-plus AMI homes, but no 0 to 30% AMI homes. So, you know, trying to figure that one out, it's, it's, it's near all the jobs and it, and it's got a, a transit system that was built by, by, you know, regional dollars that Samamish citizens are paying into for, for sound transit. They're receiving all the benefits, but they're not required to build the affordable housing. So it's, it's a really interesting regional dynamic. And what is seen is that, is that C-TAC has done their fair share. They have affordable housing. They have been providing affordable housing and that Samamish has not. And, and that Samamish needs to produce 1,400 units. Well, you start to look at some of the other cities on the east side, and the whole east side is being categorized that same way. If you look at that dashboard, you'll see that Bellevue, for example, and I, I don't know the exact number, but it's something in the range of 14,000 units between 0 to 30% AMI. Redmond, 7,000 units, not exact number again, you get the picture. So it's, it's an interesting dynamic around regional distribution of housing affordability, and they're, they're definitely working to change and redistribute where these affordable housing units are available because they're noting that many of the service workers are commuting from areas like C-TAC to areas like Bellevue for jobs. So what they're trying to do is to, is to, as a matter of equity, move the housing for those jobs to the location where the jobs are so that people aren't spending large portions of their lives in their cars in a very unhealthy manner and have equal access to housing in areas where the jobs are.
Okay, well, it's clearly complicated, so that, that's answered my question, so thanks, David.
Who else has a question? Kerry?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the details in the document. I was curious, so about the timing, you're, you will be working on strategies, and I assume on the 8th, you're giving a similar update as you are now to council? Maybe this question is for David. Is it something equivalent of the report? Okay, and then you, then folks will go off and work on strategies, and we won't see anything mid-January? Just want to confirm that's correct. Okay. And is there anything that we should be doing between now and then to think about this? Or are we just sort of waiting to see?
It's a great question. I think we wanted to provide some structure for the thinking about strategies by introducing those buckets that were on one of the earlier slides. So I think ruminating on those is absolutely a productive use of time as we move into these next couple of months. I do not want to give the, the impression that what we come back to you with in January will be fully baked, right? That will be a session in which we can explore some of the things that have gained some traction over the course of the engagement efforts that we're going to be doing in November and December, but not a finalized list, not a prioritization necessarily. So we aim to use those January meetings to help get to a prioritized list of strategies, to help narrow down from a list of what could be a few dozen strategies to something that is implementable for staff and that we think is going to be maximally impactful in terms of reaching the, the types of housing units that Samamish is, is either required to plan for or feels best meets the needs of, of their community. So I, I know that January, it sounds like a long time between now and then, but really, we're just taking that time to go away and to, to take that big list and to vet it with the community and to vet it with stakeholders and begin to narrow that down so that we can have a productive conversation with you all in January.
Okay, thank you.
I would also add that in December, we'll be doing a couple of different community engagement opportunities, and we would love to have the planning commission's help reaching out to residents, neighbors, friends in the community and encouraging them to participate.
Okay. Fantastic. And then one other question is, in terms of strategies, you know, when I was reading through it, it seems like if we build single-family homes here, you know, they'll be bought, no, no, no matter what. So is part of the strategy is to figure out how you create a market for homes, different types of homes that have, that people do want, yet they're currently living in their home. They can't create the market themselves. They just know they might need it in the future. Is there a strategy to kind of help figure out how to, to, to generate that buzz so that potentially that could be targeted here in Samamish?
I, I think the answer is yes. I mean, obviously, the strategies employed by communities throughout the region will differ because you're all responding to different housing needs. But I have seen communities that have chosen to prioritize things like marketing programs or outreach to the development community to communicate about what the perceived housing needs are. So sometimes, you know, the, the folks who are building the housing aren't tracking what we perceive demand to be in Samamish as closely as we'd like. And if we think that demand that is in existence in Samamish is not being met, then you could choose to focus on that type of outreach, those types of partnerships that do get those housing units to, to come up and to be put on the market. And in theory, if we've got an accurate assessment of demand, then that would allow folks to get out of whatever house they're occupying now that may fit someone else's needs better than it fits their own so that you've got that productive turnover and you can get, you know, everyone into a housing situation that fits their needs optimally. So I, I do think that's one avenue that we can pursue.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, David, you looked like you wanted to chime in.
Yeah, I, I, it's a great, I, I, I agree with everything being said. I, I wanted to stress that, that I don't think what, what's being discussed here is tearing down a bunch of existing single-family homes. I think what's being discussed here is trying to find a way to supplement the housing stock in areas where we are deficient. And I think, you know, some of the public comment we've heard over the years here from, from people who have visited these meetings is, is that we, we have an imbalance in housing stock. We have a lot of one type of housing, but we really need diversity in our housing. And how do we provide and what, what is, what, what are the areas that we lack in? And how do we provide those? And I think as Elliot said, how do we free up the, the, the type that we have now for those that need it and want it by creating other opportunities for those who are ready to phase out of it or move out of it because it's too big for them? They're at the, they're at a different point in their life, et cetera. And, and I think you also need to, to consider the fact that there's a state mandate, an accounting mandate for us to build 0 to 30% AMI housing, that right there. So we, we could talk about the survey and talk about the legitimacy of the survey or the basis of the survey or how it was done. But there is one thing that, that I think is, is not really part of the survey, and that is the simple fact that we have a state and county mandate to build around 1,400 0 to 30% AMI units by 2044, regardless of what the survey says. So that, that takes about half of this discussion. And then the other half of this discussion is about the survey and about, well, what, what is missing in the community for those that want to stay in the community and possibly downsize and free up some housing units that, that could help us balance out our housing stock?
TC, go ahead.
Are we going to be going through all of the graphs and stuff like that from the portion that's labeled Old Business Number Two? As part of this?
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but if you're asking about the, the charts and the graphs that were included in the housing needs assessment in the packet, we, we weren't going to walk through each of those tonight. I'm happy to answer questions about specific exhibits that were included in the report, for sure.
Yeah, so I guess my question is really about how do we reconcile kind of, I don't want to call it conflicting agendas, but Exhibit 19B, Historic and Projected Median Household Income, you know, they're forecasting it out as, you know, a, a statistical rise over the course of the next 20 years. But then the goal is to go off and build housing into the, in the, build housing targeted towards residents in the 0 to 30 AMI. That, that seems like a bit of a non sequitur to me, right? How are we going to build affordable housing and then, you know, for, for new residents and then continue to expect a statistical rise in median household income? Like what, right? How, how do we reconcile that, right? Like I, I don't purport myself to be a mathematician or a statistician or anything like that, but I, I'm just, I'm not sure how we get there, right? Does my, does my question make sense?
I mean, I think it makes sense. I think it's entirely in the mix with the discussion we've been having here over the last 15 minutes or so where there are requirements that the city is, is facing that do diverge from some of the economic characteristics of current residents. So it is absolutely true that Samamish is a wealthier community when compared to the vast majority of the other cities in the central Puget Sound region. And yet, the regional planning frameworks, the, the requirements of individual jurisdictions coming down from the State Department of Commerce through King County are asking the city to sort of partake in accommodating workers throughout the region who do serve cities throughout the region. They, they work in these various jurisdictions, even if they don't live in them. And yet, they make far below what the median household income for current residents in Samamish might be. And so there is this tension, and I think all cities in the region are, are navigating this. I, I think David's been summarizing that quite well, and it is something that all the cities in the region are grappling with right now. I mean, it's, it's a, it is a tension. It's absolutely a tension.
So I, I guess then my, my follow-up question to this is, after having collected the data from the statistically valid survey and having compiled it the way we have and having identified some of the issues that we have, is there, is there an ability for us to go back to our regional partners? King County Transit, Puget, ST3, whomever it's going to be and say? how are we going to help move people around regardless of, of where they fit within this, right? Can, can we use this as leverage to get more or better buy-in from our transportation partners, right? Because trying to, trying to place the number of new residents and trying to find the number of new jobs in the limited area that we have to, to build house, to build housing and build commercial space, you know, we have to be able to allow people to, to move around the plateau and on and off the plateau. And, you know, I, I don't see, I don't see light rail coming up here, so that's not going to get us there, right, unless they do it underground or, or something. I don't know. I, I don't know. I'm asking a bunch of questions because I see data, and I'm trying to figure out, what do we do with the data, right? We, we know that we have a mandate to build, and there, there's no getting around it.
I, I think you've hit on one of the, the points, the policy statement that's often overlooked, right? And I said this at the last meeting, is remember what the whole policy statement is. The policy statement is to increase diversity and affordability of housing choice within areas within reasonable proximity to sustainable transportation options, right? So we, we often just get sidelined just talking about housing. But what you're doing is you're reconnecting the two parts of the policy statement. And it's one that, that the city has struggled with for a long time, is what is, how do we get meaningful transit up to the city to connect us to places like the Issaquah Highlands, the downtown Issaquah, downtown Redmond, and Marymore, the Marymore, the soon-to-be Marymore Transit Center? How do we do that? And, and I think that's one that the council has been looking into quite a bit recently, and I know that they are still working on that. It appears that there's, there, that until you can have ridership that allows for that metro to break even, that you need to buy the service. You need to pay for the service to come up to the city. So we would be paying initially for a bus service to be connected to the city. Then over time, you could start to change behavior. People start to ride it. They realize the benefit of riding it. Ridership increases, the revenue increases, and the point where it breaks even is where you're no longer paying for it.
So then, so then it becomes a, a request that goes back to the city to continue or to further subsidize the ability to, to maintain this objective, right? The city has to pay?
So you're, you're again hitting on one point that I've raised in many regional forums, to the point where they don't like to hear from me anymore. My example is Hunts Point. Hunts Point is required to build one 0% to 30% AMI unit. Hunts Point is the recipient, the beneficiary, not necessarily recipient, the beneficiary of one of our most expensive regional transportation efforts, which is the, the SR 520 project. They have elevators, highways, bus stop, bus, you know, stops, unwraps to a freeway right there that we all paid for through our, our state transportation dollars that, that we pay into. And yet, they're only required to build one unit. They're also closer to jobs. It's, it's one that, you know, cities like, like against C-TAC is a recipient of light rail. We've all paid for light rail, yet we, we're not receiving any benefit from Sound Transit, but we pay for the Sound Transit, yet we're required to build 1,400 0% to 40% AMI units. And I've continued to make these statements in regional forums, but it, it's, you know, it's ultimately the policymakers, the King County, you just, the, the, the King County GMPC and the, the Affordable Housing, the King County Affordable Housing Committee are the ones that ultimately are making these decisions. And it's those who are appointed to those, those bodies are the ones who are making the decisions. So I can, I can go back to them and keep saying this, and I've been saying this, but we are still assigned 1,400 units.
Yeah, I mean, while we're sitting here talking, like, I, I'm looking at the Sound Transit Service map. We have one bus that makes two stops. And I, I don't-
So the, the challenge might be that we need to think about our zoning and think about our existing amenities and resources, such as existing arterials, and think about how a connector might work between Redmond and Issaquah that, where you could provide density along a corridor in existing developed areas that, that could support a transit, a, a, a single string of transit at a frequency that, that is, that is meaningful and makes sense.
I just also want to add that the HAP is feeding into our comp plan update, right? And our comp plan update is looking more comprehensively at land use, at transportation, and all of these things. And so I think this is an issue that will be integrated into that conversation and studied as part of that as well.
Anything else, T.C., or can we let Josh jump in here?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Josh.
All right, I'm going to take a significant amount of time. Sorry, everyone. One of the questions on the survey you started out with was, have you or someone you know had trouble paying housing costs? I'm curious if the someone you know was specified as being in Samamish or just generally?
I don't have the questions in front of me, but the language given in the document would have been as given on the survey.
Okay. The other question I had was, so maybe I could look at the survey, but 86% of Samamish jobs, 86% of people who have jobs in Samamish live outside. I'm curious if that includes home-based business, or did we exclude that from the question? Like, did we specify that it wasn't a home-based business, or?
Yeah, that's a great question. That data is not coming from the survey first, just to avoid any confusion about the, so that, that's coming from a U.S. Census Bureau data set called, the acronym is LEHD, Longitudinal Employer Household Dynamics. It's mouthful. The data, the lag time in reporting that data is a couple of years. It's not the, the most current data source, but it's one of the best data sources that we have available for jobs data, and in particular, for commuting data. What you can do is you can specify whether you want all jobs, only primary jobs, only primary private sector jobs. And I believe that what we polled, and I can clarify this later because I can always go back and check the documentation, was all primary jobs. So even if it was a home-based business, if the individual reports that as their primary source of income, it would have been counted in the data. If their home-based business is secondary to another source of income, it would not have been reflected in the data, assuming what I told you is true about the fact that we selected for only primary jobs. But again, the data set allows you to make customizations and choice about which jobs are represented.
Okay. Since we have such a high number of home-based businesses, it might be useful in five years when someone's looking at this, if that's somewhere noted, what source we're looking at. I'm also curious, and I just use search feature in the PDF, so it might not have, it might be defined, but are, is there a solid definition for starter home that we're using? Because it seems like one that could be really subjective.
It is subjective, and I think it's intended to be used subjectively in the sense that what we're trying to reflect is some of the feedback that we heard. So not just from the survey, which did include a few opportunities for open-ended comment, but also from things like the community roundtables, which were more of a discussion format. And we're hearing people in those conversations talking about wanting better access to starter homes. You know, we didn't always have a precise definition in those conversations, so it's up to the individuals who are giving those comments what they intended by that. But I think what we're doing in the report is trying to summarize the feedback that we got from residents and other stakeholders. And in some cases, that is subjective as opposed to sort of objective quantifiable data.
As we're trying to come up with strategies for the type of housing we're going to push for, it would be good to understand if we're talking about less than three bedrooms, I plan on having kids, I need a backyard, I don't, do we need a playground, that sort of thing? Because right now, that definition meant something way different to me and my wife, who have no kids, than it does to somebody who does. So that, in the future, might be useful. Property tax break you mentioned, I was wondering if you could remind me of the name that you mentioned for development projects giving a property tax break for X number of years. And my follow-up question on that is, is that just the city portion of property tax, or does that, is that inclusive of all property tax?
I'll do my best here. It is called the Multifamily Property Tax Exemption Program. Again, it's statutorily enabled at the state level, but then it's up to individual jurisdictions as to whether or not they adopt it at the local level. So you're under no obligation to provide it. The acronym is MFT-E, so MFT-E for shorthand. It offers an eight- or a 12-year exemption. I think cities have some leeway to go beyond that. And I believe that is for local property taxes, although anyone else in the room with knowledge of the program can check me on that.
So my understanding, after reading through the Commerce Guide to setting up an MFT-E program, is it does include school impact fees, or excuse me, school, school taxes and other, and county taxes. One other point that is, is made clear in the guide, and this was a question asked by Commissioner Bresko about this. And one, one other point is that in order to qualify for an MFT-E program, you have to be designated as an urban, as a, as an urban center or an urban growth center by countywide planning policy. So if we were to want to set up an MFT-E program, we'd have to go through the process of becoming designated as an urban growth center in countywide planning policies. So that's an additional layer. You know, it might take several years for us to be able to pursue amendment to CPP to set up status as an urban growth center, which would then enable us to take on an MFT-E program. There are several criteria you have to meet in order to qualify as an urban growth center. And, and that, that I think is, is an important point here, is, and I can forward the email that I sent to Commissioner Bresko, if you'd like, so that the, the commission can see what, what the requirements are and have acts, and have a link to that guide that's provided by Commerce.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful information.
I might just add, as we're working with other jurisdictions on their MFT-E programs that they already have in place, I mean, Redmond has an MFT-E program in place that has produced a, a large number of affordable units. What they've been very successful at, and I think this is visible in jurisdictions across the state, is producing units that are affordable at, at sort of moderate income, so 50% to 80% of AMI or something like that. They've been relatively unsuccessful at producing units at deeper levels of affordability. So when David talks about your growth requirement or your allocation as being heavy on units at 0% to 30% of AMI, it should be noted that MFT-E is not proven to be particularly successful at getting those deeper levels of affordability. So I gave it as an example of an incentive program that can be deployed throughout Washington State, but it is by no means definitional for incentive programs as we might consider them moving forward.
Okay. Let's see that I can email. On page 22 of 80 of the Packed or 80 of the Report, it says four to six-story homes in Town Center. My recollection was it was five plus one, plus one meaning garage. Is that accurate?
I might defer on specifics of Town Center code. Typically, five plus one or five over one is in reference to a construction type. So one-story podium, which may be used as a garage, plus four stories of stick-built or wood frame construction. But it could be the case that the context in Town Center is a little bit different, and that's where I'd have to, to defer.
I'm turning on my video right now. So Commissioner Amada, your question, I didn't get part of it because there was a ring. Could you repeat your question?
Page 22 of the Agenda. It notes four to six stories in Town Center. My understanding was, was five stories and then one, a one garage, underground garage.
So the dimensional standards in Town Center are set by building height. And so that's, it's different for each of the sub-area zones.
Got it, okay.
And so that would dictate the number of stories. Of course, structured parking is very much encouraged in Town Center. And so that, yeah, below ground, structured parking. So again, like I said, it's very, it depends on the sub-area, or this, sorry, the sub-zone of the Town Center sub-area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I've got two other items to note, that C-TAC was brought up, and a couple other cities were brought up. Those cities also have extremely diverse revenue sources, like gas tax reimbursement and sales tax, and people traveling through to buy goods and services, and we don't. So they have much higher capacity to absorb some of these expenses that come from high-density housing that we don't necessarily have available to us. So that's something that I think should be considered by the county. And I'm also curious if there's been any discussion of going to Olympia in January and explaining that the view from Olympia is a little bit different than the view from the ground, and that there might be some unintended consequences from what they passed, and there might be some requests for amendments so that we can find, you know, hit their goals, but, you know, within reason for a city that's different than what they might have been thinking about.
So that would be one to raise to the council. And, you know, I, I would recommend sending an email to the mayor suggesting that. I would support it, but it's something that, you know, we, we have tried in the regional forums, we participated in, to get the point across that we don't have a diverse revenue stream. We don't have transit. We have a very limited land supply. And the comments back that we've received are, well, the Samamish needs to do its fair share. So that really is the, the regional planners and the state mindset is that they want to distribute access to housing in areas where there are people working at jobs that need that housing. And I understand that to be one of the primary objectives of the state right now, is to try to help fix the housing crisis. We need to have housing in areas where the jobs are. And that includes the full range of jobs. Service jobs are included. And they're trying to find a way, if you look back at the dashboard again, you'll see that the method that they're using currently, and it likely will be the one that's adopted as I understand it, is far different than some of the other options, which include reduction in our current market rate housing supply in favor of building affordable housing supply. And I don't know how we would ever achieve that, demolishing existing market single-family homes to build affordable homes. Don't know how we would do that. But those are other options that are being considered. If you go back to the Agenda Bill from the last meeting, and you go to the, the Tableau dashboard that they have, I think it's really worth digging through that and taking a look at, at what some of the other options being considered are. The one, option three, seems to be the most tempered, seems to be the one that is grounded in the most reasonable comparison to what our growth targets are and what our, what our capacity is through the Urban Growth Capacity Study. And if there was an option that was to be selected, that is the best option. So I, I hate to say it, but the 1,400 units of 0% to 30% AMI is probably the most favorable for the city out of the options being considered.
Okay, thank you. And that ends all of my questions. I appreciate everyone's time.
All right, I see John Bachman has joined us. John, we had a presentation from Elliot on the Housing Action Plan Data Collection. I'm curious if you have any questions. I'll give you the opportunity here to chime in if you have questions, if you've had a chance to review it and see if you have any questions. Looking for the mute button, maybe?
There we go. Haven't used Zoom for quite a while. I don't have any questions at this point. I did read the multifamily tax exemption piece that David sent along on the plane down here to Phoenix. Yeah, that was joyful. And I haven't had a chance to look at, at the other materials. David, the one question I had was, at the last meeting- David, the one question I had was, at the last meeting, you had mentioned that there were multiple potential funding sources for these, uh, obviously the tax exemption being one. And given our kind of dire straits with, with budget, the money's got to come from somewhere. So and obviously the developers, we've got to partner with them if there's redevelopment going on in those urban centers. I guess the question is, how accessible are those other revenue sources for us?
So one, one revenue source is there is a levy option that's presented in the revised code of Washington. Um, that allows us a certain percentage of levy that could be, um, it has to be voted on. Um, so it has to be supported and voted on in order to be passed. So that would go to vote, which would be really interesting. Um, the other option is, um, and it's being considered regionally right now is a change to the REIT structure. They would add a percentage, I don't know what the percentage is, but they would be pushed back to the cities for the, this, the purpose of building affordable housing. Um, there are grant monies that you see offered up. We have uh, monies through Arch. Uh, we have not for profit builders that can build things at a much more affordable rate than a for profit builder. I don't think a for profit builder could build zero to 30%. Um, and I, I think the big question that we keep asking and we don't have a firm answer on is, and this was one of the first questions that was asked as part of this discussion is, is what is the city's obligation? At what point have we done enough to demonstrate with our comprehensive plan and our codes and our program that, that we're, that we're not a barrier to and that we're trying to facilitate it? Um, but we're not actually required to build it and we're not necessarily required to fund it. So what is that sweet spot that the county is looking for where they will certify our program? And I think that's why we're really interested in being a partner as part of the pilot program because we don't like the uncertainty. We don't want to have to keep circling around on this topic. We want some direction from them and to be part of the conversations that are sorting out these things. These are not, these are questions that all the cities are asking and there is no answer. Um, this is uncharted territory that we're in. Um, and we're doing our best to try to make sure that you're aware of this very early in the process because we don't want anyone to be surprised about this. Um, when, when the, the King County Affordable Housing Committee and the King County Council finally votes sometime next summer or sometime next fall to pass the, the affordable housing targets that we will be required to account for in our comprehensive plan.
All right, I'd like to take uh, my turn and, and similar to Josh, use up a few minutes. So um, first Elliot, a few things that are comments, which don't necessarily require any kind of response, but I'm hoping that maybe they inform future discussions a little bit. Um, and these are randomly ordered. So one of the things that bothered me in the report is the sort of co-mingling of, of growth that is related to the fact that we annexed Kohani, there were some annexation and the fact that there were some homes built. And I think to most people in Sammish, there's a much bigger difference if we're talking about growth because of the annexation versus growth because of new homes. And whenever we're talking about it, we need to be cautious about being super clear what we're talking about. So when you say, you know, the, the community, the city added 10,000 residents, well, that wasn't because we built enough homes for 10,000, I don't think. I think that was mostly because of the annexation, but it becomes easy to just say that and run over the, and cause confusion. So I encourage more discipline and diligence in keeping that clear. I also think that, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, the word provide shows up all the time and that one I struggle with a bit because um, you know, and this is just, I, I know this is just part of the vernacular of this topic, but does provide mean that we have to? Or does provide need, really mean that we need to facilitate or does provide mean that we need to allow? And those are all very different things and we might not even know what we're required to do, but we should try to be a little bit more cautious in how we communicate that to the community. Because uh, I think there might be some people that, you know, have a pretty strong opinion about that. Um, one of the things that I think is unfortunate and probably just inevitable is that uh, I think one of the key community issues um, is the aging in place and the ability to downsize topic. And you saw it in the data with the aging population, you saw it in the feedback from people's comments. Um, and yet it feels to me an awful lot like that gets overshadowed by all this discussion about housing affordability. And I want to continue to um, pester everybody about making sure we don't forget that that is a, a really important topic for a lot of people in the community. And in some cases, isn't even necessarily tied to housing affordability. And so we need to just keep that on the radar because it's easily overrun by some of this other conversation. One last thing, and I, if you see any of my written comments, you would see all this as well. Um, I think one piece of data which may come up along the way that would be interesting, perhaps even useful, but may not be accessible, I don't know, is um, the question of, you know, there's a lot of conversation in here about rent houses that are rented. Um, and I think that it would be interesting to know how many of those rental units are owned by, you know, a person that lives in Sammish or a rental, I mean, a, a investment group out of California. Now, you're going to say, well, there's no way to know that, but I, maybe there is a way to at least have some understanding of, you know, are there aggregated housing units that have been bought up by outstate investment groups? And that's a much different situation for us to try to sort out when we talk about rental affordability and, and building new units. So if there's a way to get at any of that kind of data, I think it would be interesting. All right, so now I have a couple of questions. Um, one of the big ones is, and we've talked about it a little bit, but what happens if we go through this and we really get into a position where it's truly a conflict between the mandate and what the, the citizens of Sammish demand and want? How does that get arbitrated? How does that get sorted? Um, who, who wins? Is it always going to be the county and the state or is it just up to us to be brilliant and figure out how to make both sides happy?
I, I'll answer that latter. It's the latter. Um, and I think that the, the, the state, P S R C and the county will always win. Um, they simply won't certify our comp plan. And if we don't have a certified comp plan, well, then we um, could be um, we're out of compliance. Um, there are implications for the city and revenue. Um, there are um, possibly the possibility of being sanctioned by the governor. Um, and um, ultimately we are required to achieve compliance and consistency with state law. Um, P S R C, Division 2050 and King County Countywide Planning Policy. And that is demonstrated through um, certification by the, by the state, the county and the, and the, by the state, P S R C and the county.
So does that, one of my other questions was the approval process. It appears now that there's another step in the approval process based on what you've said. And that's at the, at the county level. Um, but do we really think that that's going to create more difficulties? Or is that likely just if you, if it gets approved by the county, then probably from there on it will be, um, you know, approved by other agencies?
So it's a simultaneous review, as I understand it. Um, and we, we really, the, 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 the complexity is, is that P S R C might certify it, but the county might not. Um, and if the county doesn't certify it, then they send it back to us. And then we have to reopen the process and go back and revise the policies, revise the code. And we're caught in that spin cycle until such a time as the county determines that what we've done is adequate. Um, which is why we're very interested in engaging with the county in the pilot program to make sure that we're not caught in that expensive and uh, demoralizing spin cycle. Um, and we're able to actually achieve uh, consistency with what they're looking for. And at the right level, that's appropriate for the community. That will allow us the opportunity to understand what exactly they're looking for while at the same time trying to balance that with what the community's needs are and what is acceptable to the community. It's a big challenge. I'm, I'm not going to try and, try and uh, you know, shy away from saying that. This is probably the biggest challenge I've seen in the, the 20 years I've worked in local government. Um, it's a big one.
Yeah, uh, I agree. Um, the real heart of, of the question, this question is, it gets at the, the thing that I'm struggling with about this, and this is from our last meeting and this discussion as well. So uh, and I, I don't have the numbers, I should have them pulled up here, but if, if we're being required to build, and I'm just going to use round numbers. So you know, zero to 30% and 30 to 50, I think we're the two, and that adds up to like 2,000 or 2,100 units that are within those A M I ranges. Um, but our housing allocation number is almost the same-ish. Um, it seems to me, and you tell me if this is wrong, it seems to me that normally affordable housing is built in conjunction with market rate housing so that they're mixed together in some way, whether in a single project or within the community. And so it feels as though this is uh, a backdoor way of forcing us and probably others to build a lot more housing in order to get act, get at the affordable housing. Because I, I don't understand how it's even something that they could propose that all of the housing that we're building would be affordable housing. So therefore, the only way to actually practically make it work is to build five X, right, in order to get 20% of the housing that gets built to be affordable, then to get 2,000 affordable units, you have to build 10,000 units or whatever. I, I don't understand the math and how this actually can be a proposal from anyone, the state or otherwise, unless it's just a, you know, um, throw it out there with your eyes covered and hope somebody figures it out kind of a situation. Because I don't envision that we're talking about just building nothing but affordable units over the next 10, 20 years. Um, but yet we're required to build all of the allocation as affordable units. The math to me doesn't make sense, or I'm not tracking with what the, what the requirements actually are, or it's not being clearly stated, um, or not upfront. What is it I'm not getting about that whole, you know, calculation?
You're, you're, you're getting it. We've asked the same questions. Um, and I, I think it is that there is an expectation that we're going to build that many units and we are going to make adjustments to our policies and our codes to halt or slow down significantly the development of the market housing in the city. And that's that rebalancing that the, the, the state and the county is trying to achieve. They're, they're noticing an imbalance in housing in, across the jurisdictions in the region. Um, east side, south side, north side, and they're looking at that and they were saying, oh, hey, there's, there's an imbalance in C TAC where they have a lot of affordable housing, but not a lot of high end market housing. Um, so C TAC should change its rules to promote high end market housing. Oh, and Sammish doesn't have a lot of affordable housing, but it has a lot of high end market housing. Um, so Sammish should change its rules to, to discourage high end market housing and encourage um, affordable housing, if, if not subsidized housing. Um, and that is exactly what they're doing.
Yeah, and I guess part of it is, what I'm thinking then, and I'm probably going five steps down the road, but to me, what that means is that in some way, in, at some point, we facilitate the construction of a, of an apartment complex that has, pick a number, right, 100 apartments, 500 apartments, I don't know, whatever it is, and they're all affordable. And there's a whole bunch of practical downsides to doing that, that the county would be the first in line to say that that's not appropriate, not equitable, the list goes on and on. They would never approve the only thing that we can actually do. It, it appears that they're creating an untenable situation that we could never accomplish what they're asking for. And I'm just struggling with, you know, again, maybe jumping five steps down the road and maybe that's part of the problem. But um, it's difficult for me, and I'm presuming others, to envision any way that we could actually get from here to there.
But didn't, didn't the city already do something like that a couple of years ago with buying up a little plot of land and donating it to like Habitat for Humanity or something like that? I mean,
It is exclusively an affordable housing project. Yes.
Yeah, and I think in that case it was, I'm going to guess it was maybe 12, 10 or 12 units.
Habitat for Humanity, yep, very small project, yep, cottages.
Yep. But I mean, I think it'll be interesting to try to figure that out as we, as we move along.
So the best that we can come up with here is that we're, we're, we're expected to, we're not expected to change our growth target. We're not expected to um, stop or put a moratorium on market rate luxury housing. Um, what we are required to do is to demonstrate that our policies and our codes are not a barrier to development of affordable housing in those ranges. Um, and that we are looking at programs to try to help promote those housing in those ranges. Um, and we are doing our best to try to do our part in the region. And I, I, I'm sensing that we're not necessarily going to be um, beyond that. I don't know if there's much they can do because we, they're not giving us money to build it. Um, so I, I, I think that, and the messaging I'm getting is that we're not expected to change our growth target. So if you read between the lines on that, it's somewhere in the middle.
Okay. And, and David, just for the record, I think the problem is just that when you're trying to tell all those agencies about all of your arguments and why we're different, you just need to deliver with more charm and eloquence and maybe then it would work out. Okay, John, God, I see.
I'm with charm, so I try always. Miriam has been in a lot of those meetings and she's seen it.
John, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, David actually just mostly answered a question I was going to ask. And going back to your suggestion, David, that we participate in some sort of pilot to get some certainty around what we have to do and what we have to demonstrate we can support, I think is key. So I think that, that is headed in the right direction.
Jerry, I know earlier you had a comment. Go ahead.
A quick question for you, David. If I understood you at your last presentation, ADUs do not count?
ADUs do not count towards uh, density. So that is one way to um, provide units. And one thing I've asked um, about, we, we have a um, every year, the city hires a lobbyist down in Olympia. One thing I've asked about is, is there's two things I've asked about um, that, that are potential things. And if you guys have other ideas about things that we should be sending a lobbyist down to Olympia for, you know, I'm really curious what they are. Feel free to reach out to me after this, but the two that I've raised are trying to find a way to make the M F T E program more easily attainable. It, it seems very awkward for the county to mandate that we build 1,400 units of zero to 30% A M I. But if we want to do an M F T E program to build that, we have to go then go back to the county and go through a whole process for them to designate us as an urban growth center. That just seems totally backwards to me. So changing state law to allow us to put in place an M F T E program, if we meet certain criteria without having to go through and have the C P P's amended to have us designated as an urban growth center. That's a big one to me. Um, the second one is um, is there a way for us to look at uh, working with the legislature to change some laws around um, condominiumization of um, detached accessory dwelling units? So if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you want to build a, a 2,000 square foot um, accessory dwelling unit in your backyard or your side yard, and there's the right access and it meets all the requirements for design, et cetera, that you could condominiumize that and sell that, if somebody could own that as a starter home. Um, that's a big one, I think, that, that um, that you, you raised at the last meeting that I was really intrigued by. So that's one I've raised as well. There's others, you know, I'm curious what they are.
All right, thank you.
Gary, you had a question?
Yeah, I think, you know, I've been trying to really key in what, on what you're saying, David, where we need to uh, facilitate the ability to do it. So that was, you know, I just wanted to revisit my question earlier, like we need to find strategies or can we find strategies that create the, the market viability for this type of housing? Because, you know, let's, we could potentially focus on that and then kind of see what happens, right? The other question I had is, I noted as I was reading the document that we that we, there was on page 48 about how we're under production by 860 units. And so I wanted to know if those 860 could be any homes or if those are in these categories that we're talking about.
I'm sorry, could you give that page number again?
Oh, sorry, and that was our packet page, one sec. 34? Page 34.
Packet or in the report, I'm sorry?
In the report. So it was the last paragraph, it talks about the housing ratio and how we're 1 and King County is 1.04.
Yeah.
I just thought that was an interesting section. And so as we've been talking, I wanted to know like what type of housing those potentially would represent.
That is all types of housing, so all housing units relative to population. It's just comparing the ratio in the city of Samamish to the ratio countywide.
And so my question to David is, do we have to factor those in as well? Or is that kind of just something that could naturally happen? Like, do we have to do those? Oh, okay.
This is, so this idea of underproduction is just trying to find some sort of regional baseline or regional comparison to understand where Samamish is relative to other jurisdictions. It's an imperfect measure, but it's one that has been used by other jurisdictions to understand where they're at in terms of their housing unit count. And again, how they compare to that regional baseline. So in theory, you could say that in order to sort of catch up, if we haven't produced enough housing over time, then we should start by saying we should produce housing units relative to population at a similar level to other jurisdictions throughout the region. And then from there, accommodate our growth targets or account for forecasted growth, whatever it may be. But we're not attempting to suggest in the report, I think that this is the method that Samamish ought to imply. As you can see, we provide a couple of methods. And then the three additional methods being proposed by King County to provide five scenarios for how you might allocate that growth target. And that's just one of those scenarios.
I get that, it's a parody. It's, you know, it's used cross-comparison, right?
Mike, go ahead.
I have a question about next steps on developing the Housing Action Plan and especially about testing strategies. And so I'm interested in how you're going to be doing that and with particular interest in perhaps testing them against not just examples of like the strategies that you provided earlier, those six examples. But how the strategies will impact how survey results, the interest that the respondents provided, like concerned with taxes and higher density housing being built and access to retail entertainment. So basically, wondering how the next steps, especially related to testing strategies, will work and how you'll rotate or pull into those tests, the survey results that you received.
Well, I think we start with the survey results. That's got to inform our initial list of strategies. So anything that we want to take the community for vetting has to pass the test of being largely supported by what we heard in the survey. And then we intend to go back to the community. So it may not be in the form of a survey. There will be other ways that we can gauge community opinion. But as Miriam said, we've got two events in late November, early December that we are working on planning for, where we do intend to take that larger list that we think does respond to the needs identified in the survey and engage residents of Samamish, engage workers in Samamish to narrow those down for us, for the ones that they think best meet their criteria. And at that point, it becomes a collaborative conversation with you all at your January meeting and with council as well. We see it as iterative, I guess. I think we would aim to cast a wide net initially. I mentioned those six buckets. We could come up with six things for each of those buckets that you might want to evaluate that do largely respond to the needs of the survey. But we don't think that you'll end up carrying 36 strategies forward for implementation. So we want to vet those with the community over the course of the engagement and then with you all as well. Does that respond to the question?
Somewhat. Just say a little bit more about the engagement. So do you anticipate like pulling people together in focus groups? Or do folks just show up or respond to something online? Or, and how would they be informed about, you know, understanding what the strategies are?
We've been discussing that just over this last week or two. So we're very much in the throes of planning for this right now. I don't know that we have specific meeting formats that we've committed to, but we're very much looking to things that can welcome in large swaths of the community. So open house style events, we've talked about hybrid formats that we can engage people in person and online. And we've talked about then taking some similar content to other platforms that are available outside the meeting times, like Connect Samamish. So I think we envision a multi-pronged approach to try to get as many people as possible. And part of this is that we'll develop materials that are educational about what the strategies rather would entail. So trying to take some of the jargon out of it and if it's a complicated sort of financial tool, to demystify it in whatever way we can so that we understand, you know, what the tool is intended to do, what it would practically require of Samamish to implement and what its aim would be, like why we're potentially prioritizing that in the first place. Is it aimed at the starter homes? Or is it aimed at the downsizing? Or is it aimed at the 0 to 30%? Because there are different goals, as we've been talking about, that Samamish will be required to respond to. And there will be a different suite of strategies that will be optimized to respond to each of those goals.
And then one other thing, just maybe as a, you may have mentioned this in all of those things you're saying, but it seems to me that if you're gathering people together, you're going to have to explain what it means to be 0 to 30% and not just the 30%, you know, but what that means in terms of housing payments and income and what those types of units might look like. In addition to, like you had mentioned, one of the strategies could be incentives. Well, what does that mean exactly? So I think informing those who are participating in ways like that would be really important. And in addition then to gauging their input and feedback. So it sounds like a lot of work coming up, so good luck with that.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're well aligned, thank you.
All right, who else has questions or comments? John, go ahead, John.
Elliot, sorry, I missed the first half of this meeting. In laying this out in your public outreach, what kind of stories are you, how are you going to lay out the problem that we're faced with for our community specifically? Do you have specific examples, narratives, some way to communicate what the problem? I mean, we've got the technical problem with stuff coming down from the state. But how do we hit home with our residents that, you know, you're sitting in your very fancy home and, oh, that's that low-income affordable housing? That problem is somewhere else. Well, how do we tie that back to our community?
That's a fantastic question. I don't know that I have the perfect answer right here and now. I think we do try to tell a story. The data tells only part of the story. The survey results tell only part of the story. The explanations that we can give of the types of tools and how they align with those requirements, right? I was just saying that different suites of strategies will be optimized to tackle different problems. I think part of the answer lies there in saying that, you know, here are the different requirements that you're facing. Additionally to the requirements, here are the different needs the community has advanced. Here are things that can respond to all of those. And here are trade-offs. And we have no problem highlighting what those trade-offs might be, acknowledging that trade-offs exist and having the community work through those. I think engaging the community in an exercise on trade-offs can often be very useful because we don't typically put ourselves in the position of trying to adjudicate those for your residents. So those are just some initial thoughts philosophically, but we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're actually designing meeting materials or anything like that for the meetings that would be upcoming in December.
I would just add, I think a big part of the story is kind of humanizing and personalizing what a household in 0 to 30% looks like, what a household in 30 to 50 looks like. I think, you know, when you frame it in people's everyday lives, it's much more tangible. And we hear all the time from, well, we're talking with our school staff about how they have a hard time with retention of quality teachers. And that's going to impact Samamish residents. We hear, you know, having open business hours, we see that a lot in COVID as we travel to different cities, you'll see shops that are shut down because there's a shortage of workers. And those are things that you'll start to see when you don't have your workers living in the city or near the city that they're working in. And I think we even heard that from one of the roundtable discussions from a utility provider in terms of if there's an emergency, there's only a few staff who live in the city that can come help. Everyone else is outside and lives far away. So starting to think about it from those perspectives, I think is helpful. And maybe showing how those different positions align with those different income levels would be helpful for people.
All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Elliot. This is, as I said before, one of the key issues for the city. And I would imagine it's probably exciting in your line of work, but also you question whether you get into the right line of work at times like these. I can understand. So thank you, and Miriam and everyone else as well, thank you. I know we're going to have a lot more discussion about this.
It is daunting. No, you're not the only, not the only community grappling with it, I can assure you. But thank you for having me nonetheless.
I look forward to all the brilliant solutions everybody else is going to come up with that we can copy and use. All right, thanks, everyone. Let's move on to our next new business item, which is an introduction and get people familiar, get the commission familiar with our greenhouse gas emission and vehicle miles travel reduction strategy and the planning associated with that. I admit, I'm not sure who's presenting this because I got kind of distracted by that first topic.
I can introduce it. So, thank you. Tonight we have Brightworks. We have Chris Forney and Kristen Meneses, or excuse me, last name, Meneses. I probably didn't pronounce it properly there either, I apologize. With us to write a presentation and then we'll open it up to Q and A with the commission. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, David, and thank you, City Council. We are Brightwork Sustainability and we're brought on to facilitate some climate action planning, starting with the Transportation Development Plan. Kirsten Meneses is our Sustainable Org's lead. And so she'll be leading much of the presentation. Kirsten, want to go ahead?
Hi, it's great to meet you all. And we look forward to speaking with you tonight regarding the Climate Action Plan and some of the various scopes and how they'll be interweaving into your emissions reduction strategy for the city of Samamish. So a couple of questions that we'd like you to be thinking of tonight. Again, this is an introduction to the scope. So we'll be keeping it high level and let you know some of the work that we've already been starting and, you know, the stakeholders that we're planning to engage and where we are in the process. But we'll come back to these questions at the end. But some things that we'd like you to be thinking about are, who are additional stakeholders that you would recommend in this process? A lot of them tonight will be focused really on data collection since that's where we are currently with baselining of the city emissions. But, you know, we ask you to be thinking about other potential stakeholders. As we go through and we talk, and today again, we'll be speaking mostly to the data and baselining and as part of these scopes, we also ask you to be thinking about key challenges and opportunities that you think that we should be aware of. Again, as we're reaching out to stakeholders to collect this information. And then at the end, we'll be presenting you with our project scopes and our timelines for these scopes, as well as some milestones of expected check-ins with the city, expected milestones of when you can see some of this work being completed. So, you know, we'll come back at the end to see if you have any questions about that. So our agenda, we'll go through introductions. We just did some brief introductions, but we'll give you a little bit more history of Brightwork Sustainability. We'll then jump into the scopes, focusing first on our core scope. The greenhouse gas VMT grant scope will then move into the larger comprehensive plan update. And then we'll talk about how those two core scopes will feed into the larger climate action plan for the city. We'll then talk about process. So again, where we are currently and then where we're moving to complete all of these scopes. And then timeline and next steps, and then of course, Q and A. So returning back to that set of questions that we just showed on screen. So what we do, this is a brief overview of Brightwork Sustainability and various projects that we work on. On the left, you can see our practices and how our organization is built. Everything from sustainable and healthy buildings and master planning related to implementation. So our engineering team for energy analysis, building performance, infrastructure performance. And then up top, which is the organization that I lead, is our Sustainable Organizations, which really sits as the strategy for organizations such as yourself. So this is where we talk about Scope 1, 2, and 3 Emissions Inventories, decarbonization, carbon strategy. And again, really pull in all of these implementation pieces to align you with your targets moving forward for greenhouse gas emissions reductions. This is the team, so we just gave you a quick, brief introduction. Chris said hi at the beginning, one of our principals. As noted, I'm the practice lead for this organization. And then we have two of our project managers within this practice, also working on this project, Alexis and Aaron. Okay, so jumping in, the first item that we have is really going over our scope and we'll be going in more depth each of these scope pieces. But wanted to pull up this visual to really explain how these scopes fit together. So at the core is the grant VMT greenhouse gas assessment and comp planning. So again, looking at vehicle miles traveled, transportation, some residential emissions. Again, that's the core focus and what we're beginning with immediately going forward is the larger comprehensive plan update that these transportation emissions fit into. This broadens the scope, looking at all buildings, comprehensive planning for all buildings, things like land use change, so larger city emissions for Samamish. And then encompassing those two scopes and going even further, we have our full climate action plan. So going beyond just updating the comprehensive plan and really creating a climate action plan for the city of Samamish. And we'll talk about what a geographic plus climate action plan is, as well as the scope of what that means for what we're planning for process, everything from baselining to target setting to those future emissions reductions and implementation measures, which will be woven into the comp plan and some of these other scopes. So they sort of nest within each other and all build on each other. So in working with the city so far and speaking to our contacts and our stakeholders, you know, we've gotten to know the city of Samamish more and understand the way that your city operates. And we've identified the significant emission sources within the city. So over on the left, you see transportation, you know, the city of Samamish being a commuter or a bedroom community. This will likely be a significant portion of your city's emissions. And this is what's covered under the grant VMT scope. So again, we'll be understanding those vehicle miles traveled, the emissions associated with them, and then planning for reduction measures in the future comp plan. Next, moving to the other significant emission sources that will be covered in the comp plan is built environment electricity, again, mostly for those residential homes, but also for some of the other building uses within Samamish. Also moving to natural gas and oil within those homes. So again, sort of the energy sector for residential and the emissions associated with that. And then we'll also be speaking to land use change, you know, planned land use change. And, you know, this refers to emission sources. But this is also important because it discusses sequestered emissions and the ability of Samamish to continue sequestering emissions. All of these scopes are covered within the geographic plus climate action plan. So again, you know, we're referring to them in chunks that you remember back to that nested scope diagram. So starting with grant VMT and then building further out to encompass these other pieces. But they will altogether collectively be referenced as part of the climate action plan as the key emission sources. So beginning first with the GHGM VMT reduction strategy. So this will be understanding the greenhouse gas emissions. So this will be understanding the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled and creating a reduction strategy in response to those commuting patterns and the greenhouse gas emissions associated with those commuting patterns. So first, we'll go through and we'll analyze the association with transportation within the city. Again, the largest source is going to be from commuters, which is what we expect. Although, you know, COVID has changed some of the way that communities commute and the way that companies ask employees to commute. So this is something that we'll be working on with the V M T engineers. Point number two will be creating implementation measures to be integrated into the comprehensive plan that will reduce these V M T emissions. So looking at what we can implement with the city in order to reduce vehicle miles traveled and the emissions associated with them. And then third, we'll really be taking a step back and using this effort to align with larger K four C emissions reductions targets, which we'll speak about a little further on. And again, the larger climate action planning goals for emissions reductions for the city of Smamish. So making sure that the goals that we set here and the implementation measures that we identify line up with the larger county emissions reduction planning. And so why are we focusing on the G H G V M T scope first? You know, why was this the initial plan and core scope of starting our climate action plan? And really, it's because of the regulation piece of it. And we've called out R C W thirty six point seventy A Growth Management Act. And under this rule, Smamish must measure G H G emissions and vehicle miles traveled and establish a reporting protocol for strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. So again, you know, this is the regulated piece. So this is what we sort of must do as the city of Smamish to comply with Washington. And again, is really the core and the piece that we're starting with first, also a very large emission source. So it's a great place to start. And then our future scopes will be building from there on the great work that we do as part of this scope. So to give a little more information into some of the work that we're starting currently. So again, we're very focused on transportation as part of this initial scope. The main activity data that we will be tracking is those daily vehicle miles traveled. There's some background information that we're able to pull from Puget Sound Regional Council. So that's a stakeholder that we plan to engage with, as well as the King County emissions and emissions inventory. So those are data sets, again, that we plan to utilize as part of this effort. You know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. So if they have really great information there that we can have access to, great. Let's understand that information and use the great work that's been done and make sure that, you know, we have it tailored to fit for Smamish. So that's where the Smamish Public Works engineers come down, come in here as additional stakeholders for us to engage with, you know, and helping us to understand, okay, there's this great data at a regional level and at the county level. What does that mean for the city of Smamish? And what does that mean for the emissions associated with the city of Smamish? So we'll be working with all of these stakeholders, again, to better understand the emissions associated specifically with this city and the city's inhabitants. So moving beyond the G H G V M T scope and moving to the larger comprehensive plan updates. So this is where we'll work with the city to introduce measures that target emissions reductions beyond transportation and really focus on additional key impact areas. We mentioned previous to residential buildings, as well as other built environment buildings within the community. You know, some of the buildings that house the various jobs and other sectors. So we'll be writing implementation measures for that, as well as implementation measures for land use change. So again, you know, moving that sphere of influence beyond transportation, but really looking to the other emission sources within the city that can be positively influenced by the comprehensive plan updates. So the first piece of this that we'll be digging into is built environment emissions. You know, we spoke earlier about transportation, again, this being a bedroom community. The other really large source of emissions that we see that are going to be important for the city of Smamish are really the emissions associated with the residential dwelling units within the city. And so the activity data to track, you know, will be kilowatt hours consumption from P S E, Puget Sound Energy. And they are really the stakeholder that we plan to engage to better understand the electricity emissions associated with the city of Smamish. Again, King County and a lot of the surrounding cities have done a lot of great work as far as their climate action plannings and already collecting this data from Puget Sound Energy. You see them noted throughout lots of other cities' climate action plans in the area and King Counties. And so, you know, as part of the stakeholder engagement, we're looking forward to working with them. And, you know, hopefully they're to these data requests and have seen them before and can provide us with the information to better understand Smamish's emissions. And something that's important to keep in mind as well, you know, as we're thinking about emissions for the city and for Puget Sound Energy is, you know, where those emissions are coming from. So what the mix is for the grid that's delivering power to these homes and what we can do to have influence around that power, especially, you know, the city as we're planning for engagement and for stakeholders. What is the leveraging power that you have with groups like Puget Sound Energy? Do homes start thinking about ways to move away from coal or from some of the other, you know, really heavy emission sources for electricity and move more towards, you know, renewable or carbon-free grid, like we see over in Seattle City Light with a large amount of hydro. So again, as we're going through and we're thinking for climate action planning, as well as comprehensive updates, we'll think about measures that can go into the comprehensive plan specifically for the structure and the infrastructure. But we'll be taking a step back and saying for our climate action planning, where can we go above and beyond that to hit targets for emissions reductions? They mean engaging, you know, your energy providers like Puget Sound Energy. The next emission source that we'll tackle will be natural gas and oil. So again, very similarly, the activity data to track primarily for this category will be natural gas consumption. Again, from Puget Sound Energy, we're hoping to engage them very similarly to how we engage them for electricity. Again, they're noted throughout the counties' climate action planning, as well as a variety of cities. And so we expect to be able to engage them and better understand, you know, the emissions associated with residential usage, as well as some of those other more minor building types through the city of Smamish. The next emission source that we'll focus on will be land use change and thinking about future development for the city of Smamish and what's planned for the city of Smamish, especially as it continues to grow. And thinking about ways that we can promote thoughtful and careful land use change. Again, that promotes sustainability within the city. You know, thinking about affordable housing, as you all were earlier today. You know, having thoughtful consideration around where we build density and where we build cores, you know, where we build things like affordable housing in relation to, you know, available transportation or jobs or walkability will be really important as we think about this land use change. And then where can we protect green space? Where again, can we protect those sequestering areas for carbon emissions reductions in the future? So again, this is something that we'll be diving into to better understand how over various time scales, we can expect the city of Smamish to change. And some of our stakeholders that will be engaging will be with the city, planning, permitting, and the city assessor.
Kirsten, can I ask you to pause for just one second? Would somebody move to extend the meeting, please?
So moved to, oh, sorry, extend the meeting to what time? Let's see, nine.
Can somebody second that? It's been moved to second to extend to nine. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, we're extended to nine. Thanks, Kirsten. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. So we spoke about those first two core items. So the V M T transportation, and then we moved out and spoke about the larger comp plan update. And now we'll speak about how those initiatives fit into the larger climate action planning. You know, we're speaking about emissions, we're speaking about measures to be implemented in the comp plan. And really what we'll be doing now is pulling those pieces together into a larger comprehensive plan for the city. And this includes full inventorying of existing emissions. So those emissions categories that we just spoke of, as well as some additional minor emission sources. So from things like wastewater treatment and from water utility within the city. So we'll conduct a full inventory of the existing emissions. We'll then create reduction goals or targets. There's already some great reduction goals and targets that have been laid out by King County. So we'll speak about those in a moment. But, you know, aligning our emissions reductions in alignment with those targets. So, you know, twenty, thirty goals, twenty fifty goals, et cetera. We'll then go through and prioritize our reduction actions. So understanding where the levers are for the city to be able to pull in regards to these emissions. Where are your really material, large emission sources? And again, where's the area where you can have the greatest impact or change towards those emissions reductions? Through this process and, you know, large-scale climate action planning city of Smamish. Again, we want to give a nod to the fact that King County and Puget Sound have really done a lot of the foundational work for this climate action planning and for our baselining. Again, which is great, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. And so we're able to tap into a lot of these great resources and are also looking forward to tapping into these stakeholder groups. And something that this allows us to do as well is keep greater perspective and make sure that as we're creating your climate action plans and your target reductions, that they're in alignment with what these groups are asking for as well, that they're in alignment with what King County is planning and that they're in alignment with what Puget Sound is planning for emissions reductions. We spoke previously about targets. So K four C actually has county-wide goals for carbon emissions reductions, which is great for us. And creating our climate action plans, these are goals that, you know, we will plan to adhere to. Again, to stick within the larger county and region emissions reductions. And so we have a fifty percent carbon emissions reduction by twenty thirty goal and eighty percent by twenty fifty. So we'll speak in a moment about the planning and processing of climate action planning. But target setting is a very important initial step. And so it's great that, again, you know, the county has already set in place really established goals that we can anchor ourselves to. And so as we go through and we engage in this climate action planning process, we will be doing a geographic plus inventory. And this can be referenced in King County's climate action plan, as well as Puget Sound's larger climate action planning, as well as the greenhouse gas protocol. And so the greenhouse gas protocol for community-scale greenhouse gas inventories is really the foundational framework that's used essentially worldwide for organizations doing climate action planning. And it outlines all of the methodologies and accepted emissions calculations for how cities should be thinking about their. So this is the methodology that Brightworks will be using for the accounting and reporting standards. It's online, it's free if you ever feel like you want to go through and read up on carbon calculations. But this is the process and the framework that we will be adhering to as we go through and complete these calculations. So again, you know, we've understood and reviewed your emissions factors against this methodology and this protocol. And that's how we'll be moving forward with your climate action planning. And so the scopes that we spoke about previously are all pieces of your mission story. And so something that, you know, we're doing in alignment with the G H G, you know, V M T scope, the comprehensive plan scope and the climate action plan scope is really weaving together the synergies of these efforts. So that way, as we go through and we do the data collection process, we do the baselining inventory. You know, we're engaging the appropriate stakeholders to have that inventory completed all at once. You know, we're starting with the greenhouse gas V M T portion. But as part of this process over the next couple of months, and you'll see our timeline in just a minute. But really, we're taking a step back and we're doing the entire inventory, doing the inventory for the V M T plan, but also for the larger climate action plan. Next, we move into adopting a target, which we just spoke about. There's already really great targets set by the county. Then we move into forecasting emissions and reductions. So understanding how the city of Smamish will be changing over time and then how the implementation and reduction measures will align us with future reduction forecasts that we'd like to set for our targets. We'll then go through and select our strategies and how we will be implementing them. So again, through things like the comp plan, implementing our measures there, as well as, you know, engaging the grid energy where necessary. So all of our implementation reduction strategies, again, to get us to those target items. And then we'll talk about monitoring and tracking progress over time. So again, you know, you can't manage what you don't measure. And so this is really meant to be a cyclical process with this year being the baselining year. But then continuous measurement, that way you can show tracking towards improvement. So we'll also be outlining some strategies for monitoring and tracking progress in the future. This is our proposed timeline as we have it currently. And I realize that there's a lot going on on this screen. But you can see phase one is really the greenhouse gas V M T comp plan with the G O plus cap underneath. As noted, you can see that many of the scopes, especially within these first few months, run in tandem. And again, you know, we're aiming to collect all of the data and stakeholder engagement and data analysis in these months together in tandem again, so we can have a full baseline of the city of Smamish's emissions. We'll then move into reduction measures and identifying those measures for the G H G comp plan, as well as for the G O plus cap, which you can see extends slightly further. And again, this is because of the really comprehensive nature of the climate action plan. You know, you're really going beyond the emissions associated with the operations of the city to, you know, the city's larger sphere of influence, which is also the people who reside within the city and the structures within the city. So slightly larger timeline there. And then moving into implementation and reporting. In dark blue, we have noted some milestone meetings. So check-in meetings with the Planning Commission, as well as City Council check-in meetings. These are very high level currently. To put, you know, sort of on the radar, certain check-ins. But what you can expect over the next month or so is a more detailed breakdown of regular check-ins and meetings that we'll be expecting with the city, as well as with you all on status update and things like that. So there's more to come. This is just a high-level timeline. With that, moving into questions. So these were some questions that we asked at the beginning of the meeting. As noted, you know, most of the stakeholders that we've spoken about today have been around data collection. We realize that there's also larger community stakeholders, some of which the city has already started helping us to outline. But, you know, we would love to get your thoughts and opinions on key stakeholders for us to be engaged with, as well as, as we as well as, as we said previously, you know, key challenges and opportunities as we're engaging these stakeholders, as we're collecting this data, as we're engaging with Puget Sound, King County, um, uh Puget Sound Energy, um, any challenges that you think that we should be aware of? And then just any general questions about the project scopes or timelines?
Okay, thanks, Kirsten. Um, who has some feedback on those questions or questions about the scope? T C, do you have something?
Yeah, eh, how do we? How do we account for the proposed growth as part of the Growth Management Act in conjunction with this, right? We're talking about bringing in N number of construction and having to increase city staff to accommodate that in additional police, fire, E M S, waste, vehicles, trash management, all of that stuff. And, you know, also are we factoring in as part of this the decrease in in canopy cover and trees that are gonna get removed? Like how, like, the, th- this, this isn't a topic that I think is divorced of the previous topic, right? Like, or how do we, how do we accommodate for it? We all wanna produce less greenhouse gas, but we're gonna have more stuff to do. So, what are we, are we gonna have like our service team riding around on Lime scooters to deal with, you know, service requests, like, the, wh- what, what's the actual outcome that we're looking for with this? It's a, it's a great idea. I, I love it. Like, produce less gas.
So, as we engage stakeholders, um, we do ask questions around time horizons. So for those initial, as an example, um, V M T models that we'll be receiving from the city and the city's engineering team, there are time horizons that we request from them, that model in the city's future growth. So we'll be doing that with all of our stakeholders, understanding how growth is expected for the city. And then as far as uh implementation reduction measures, um, those are items, again, with the stakeholders where we speak with you all to determine feasibility, you know, maybe not everyone rides around on a Lime scooter. But we start discussing uh E V charging infrastructure and what that looks like in electric vehicles with the city. Um, again, with the greening of the grid, so how do emissions go down as we start electrifying and and moving off of gas-using systems?
So, Kristen, that's, that's a great uh point, talking about the grid itself. You know, where I reside, you know, I own a gas propane-powered generator for the N number of times my power goes out every year. What if we said, hey, Puget Sound Energy, put your lines underground? And now we can factor in how many powerages we don't have and how many generators we don't run? Like, is that something that we can plop onto this?
I think as we start engaging stakeholders, those are really key pieces that we want to hear from you, or some of those suggestions. And as we do climate action planning, you know, of course, we're thinking about emissions reductions, but other key factors that we'll be thinking about is, of course, resiliency, so resiliency of the grid and the grid infrastructure, um, as well as uh planning for environmental justice. So making sure that all of those items are are interwoven with each other as we're thinking about future planning. So I think that's a, that's a great point.
Okay, John, go ahead.
So, thank you, T C. Those were really good thoughts and comments. This topic is no less complicated than housing and interwoven with it. You know, do we go after the biggest bang for the buck? You know, we don't have good transit here. So, re- reducing vehicle miles in the very near term uh may be challenging. Or do we go after something really simple like banning gas-powered leaf blowers like Seattle has? I, I don't have any answers to this. And then how's the market gonna drive conversion to, say, electric vehicles or the new incentives for switching to um heat pumps from natural gas or oil? Boy, just, you know, it seems like those levels of reduction and changes in behavior in that time period is gonna be a challenge unless there are very significant economic or other behavior drivers. Really complicated question. And of course, as T C said, tree canopy, which I've, is always important to an old Parks guy, um, is also a key factor.
It's interesting, I mean, um, you know, I think from our perspective, especially when we're talking in nu- in numbers such as, you know, a fifty percent reduction uh by twenty thirty, which, which is typical for most organizations, cities, but also corporate organizations. You know, we are really in the decisive decade. Um, these uh, this need for emissions reduction has has come fast. And because of that, I, I do think it is beneficial and what will guide you towards is really the areas where it is the most bang for your buck and where the city can leverage its power. There's some items that are happening, just because, as you noted, you know, the world and the market is changing. I think one that we often see, um, especially with commuting miles is um COVID, especially in cities such as this, you know, a lot of organizations have moved to teleworking a lot more days of the week. And instead of driving in and going to the city every single day, so how has that reduced vehicle miles traveled? What are the challenges with that? You know, I think we were speaking to David earlier and we were talking about broadband availability within the city. So what does that mean for the city if we want to foster more teleworking um for the, the people in the city who work for tech? And so all of this is, is, you know, very interwoven and will be discussed as part of the climate action planning. Um, I think another important piece is, again, where is the most bang for your buck and where can you leverage your power? So again, in speaking to David, we know that there were some past conversations with Puget Sound Energy um and, you know, discussing with them um the amount of missions associated with the grid and ways of, you know, moving forward with them towards a cleaner grid. And I think understanding your power within the city and leveraging um those uh organizations is really important.
Carrie, did you have some feedback?
Yeah, just a quick feedback. I am not sure who you're looking for in terms of stakeholders, if it's, if it's um organizations or or people. But I would definitely say, you know, the youth in Smamish has expressed a lot of interest. So maybe if there's a way to focus in on on them. And then they've also, uh, they and others have asked for, you know, dashboards so that we can track our proj- progress. And so that might be something useful if we are working towards reducing fifty percent by twenty thirty. So, a way to measure ourselves and we do need to change behavior. And sometimes approaching it from a different angle uh is helpful versus a- another, you know, just saying we need to do it. Finding a way to make people come to that realization themselves. And so showing them how our progress is might be helpful.
I think that there's a, an additional point to that, which is if we're gonna go off and do things like reducing emissions by decreasing vehicle mileage, we also need to tie that into what the actual serviceability of the city looks like, right? If we've reduced emissions by twenty-five percent, but the amount of time that it takes to get somebody out to do maintenance is up fifty percent, what, what have we done, right? So they're not divorced concepts. If you want, if you wanna show one, you have to show them all.
Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you. I've got just two questions. Uh, one is, uh, is there a local city that you've done one of these action plans for that could be shared with us so we'd understand what the end result is, looks like? And two, how will you engage the largest stakeholders, which are the residents?
Yeah, our um largest stakeholders, the residents, through V M T, will be working with the uh uh Transportation Engineering Group to, uh, oftentimes we work through surveys, uh, point of origin, point of destination uh studies to uh understand what kind of trips are being taken, what type of vehicles, what their carbon emissions are. And we can run scenarios to uh inform decision-making. Similar work we've done in the past, uh, working with the Tri-Cities, um, their uh Hanford site, uh, working on their transportation greenhouse gas emissions. And uh, yeah, there's other municipal examples we can share.
Mike or Josh? Mike, go ahead.
Just a quick one, you mentioned about additional stakeholders. I didn't see um police, eastside fire and rescue. I would think that they would have, um, you know, specific uses and and things like that that might be useful as a additional stakeholders.
Josh?
I do. Um, when we use the term vehicle miles traveled, is that just another word for uh carbon emissions? Or are we specifically concerned about vehicle miles traveled, no matter the type of um power the vehicle uses?
So we're using vehicle miles traveled in service of greenhouse gas emissions, and it is one type of um emissions reduction strategy. Uh, other reduction strategies might include fuel switching. So, for example, going from uh gas, which has a greenhouse gas emissions factor that is different than the fuel mix of the utility. And um, so, uh, and then uh changing vehicles, vehicle efficiency is another lever. Uh, and then vehicle miles traveled is sort of the largest category. And it includes taking fewer trips, taking shorter trips, or the nega-trip, the trip not taken. Commuting, or uh, not commuting, but working from home is a good example of the, the trip not taken. Uh, walking down the street to the grocery store rather than getting into a car. Uh, so again, through uh surveys and point of origin, point of destination, we can uh study what kind of trips are being made and what kind of vehicles uh and uh provide scenarios and options to inform your decision-making.
Okay. With the latest transportation package, the sale of gas-powered cars have been banned after twenty thirty. And so there's gonna be a natural switch over in Smamish. Will probably happen at a higher rate than other surrounding communities, given our financial situation here. So I'm curious if there's that can, if there's like, are we projecting out that Smamish will change over at X rate? And so we're gonna have this natural change over and natural drop of carbon emitting vehicle miles traveled? And we're gonna try to exceed that? Or is that just baked into our goal and we're kind of a beneficiary of this mandate from the state? How is that part of the calculation?
Yeah, you end up being a beneficiary, and this is something that a lot of the groups that we work with ask because grids are sort of greening everywhere. And so the major question as groups are looking at electricity or or what have you is, um, you know, do we have to figure out a fifty percent reduction on top of, you know, the larger carbon economy grids, cars, et cetera, changing? Um, and the answer is that you get to take advantage of those changes, which is why you see a lot of communities and a lot of organizations and and buildings and groups speaking towards electrification. Because the idea is, is that the more, you know, you have electrified systems, you can take advantage of those clean power grids. You can take advantage of those infrastructure items to reach your goals of fifty percent reduction, eighty percent reduction, a hundred percent, et cetera.
Okay. And I think my last item here is on, uh, you said waste was an optional item. Can you speak to what that means in the larger picture of this plan?
Yes, so your waste, um, you do not have any waste processing facilities within Smamish, um, which means, you know, associated with waste, there is a lot of anaerobic digestion. There's a lot of methane associated with the way that waste is processed. Uh, if you had waste within your borders, waste treatment, waste processing, um, that would fall within your scope one emissions. So meaning within your boundary, your direct emissions. Um, the way that it's looked for, looked out for G O plus is that it can be included, but it would be scope three emissions. And that's because really it's being taken outside of your county to be processed somewhere. Um, so again, depending on how we think about how we want to capture the emissions, we, you know, it would be waste reduction at the source with um engagement of your businesses and with your residents. But it would be scope three, so not within, you know, your immediate boundary.
I don't quite know what the difference is between what scope, you know, the different scope levels. So I guess, like, if we were to have an education plan for you can throw your food waste in your um yard waste bin. And I'm sure there's a lot of people who don't do that, that's a huge reduction in um waste going to the landfill versus breaking down naturally. So I'm curious, that's, you know, something that I think we could have a big impact on. But um, it doesn't sound like it can necessarily be a big part of this plan, is that my understanding? Is that understanding correct?
Um, it's an optional scope, so if we want to be considered, if we want to have it considered as part of that plan, um, we can. And I think waste is, is a really great one actually to look at, because as you're mentioning, it's a way to have direct engagement from uh the community. It's a direct way to have engagement, um, you know, we often see with tenants, things like that, because it's something tangible that they feel that they can impact, it's sort of the easiest for them to see. Um, so I think if we want to include options like that and can include that scope three within this plan, um, we can definitely, as as a way to sort of mo- mobilize the community and account for those emissions.
Yeah, I'm just looking at impact per dollar spent. And I don't know what the actual impact is on reducing that sort of waste, but it seems like pretty low-hanging fruit for a city like Smamish with so many, so many houses and so few other carbon emission sources. So that's why I bring it up, but that's the, that's the end of my questions and commentary. Thank you.
And so for my part, just two things, one, in terms of stakeholders, I think uh at least on the list of, to varying degrees, things to consider. King County Metro runs buses through here, you know, not a huge number, but a number of buses that run through the city constantly all day long. Uh, and they probably are pretty interested in in this topic elsewhere as well, I'm assuming you deal with them elsewhere, so I would add them to the list. Um, you know, Xfinity and Comcast and probably some similar type of of um companies have probably fifty service vans running around the city all day long, every day and on the weekends. So in terms of vehicle miles traveled, that might be a place to also, and a, a single point of contact that might have some interest. Our two most significant employers, first people in Smamish are Microsoft and Amazon. And they have whole departments that focus on this topic exclusively. So figuring out ways that we could coordinate with them to take advantage of things they may already be planning. Um, they're not quite the same kind of stakeholder, but certainly could contribute since they're such significant employers for us. And uh, I've also thought, always thought that departments of transportation, both our transportation folks within the city, but also the state, um, and figuring out how the, we operate our road system in a way that's more efficient. Uh, I'm not sure, there's a lot of talk about that, I'm not sure there's a lot of action sometimes that actually results in improvements there. Cause we're always gonna have quite a few people commuting and figuring out how to make that more efficient would be worthwhile. So there are some stakeholder suggestions. Um, my last comment, my actual comment is also in terms of a challenge. I think that, in my view, there's substantial urgency to take action in this regard. Um, and that urgency that many people feel kind of also results in us often then not taking any action because there's too many opinions and too many topics to cover and too many rabbit holes to go down. And pretty soon, um, we don't do anything because we can't figure out what to do. And I would really urge you um help us to stay on topic, to stay on task and remind, you know, this commission, the city council, staff, everybody, that um doing something, even though it may not be perfect, is far better than getting stuck in the mud and doing nothing, and that's kind of been the problem in the past. So keep that as a theme, and I think we'll maybe be able to actually accomplish something. Anything else on this topic? All right. Thank you, Kristen and Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we should probably extend the meeting for fifteen minutes so we can do public comment.
Move to extend to nine fifteen?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend to nine fifteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, no? All right, thanks, we're extended to nine fifteen. I think we're wrapped up and we can move on to public comment. All right. Thanks for extending to nine fifteen. I think we're wrapped up and we can move on to public comment. I'll just remind everybody, this is agenda related public comment. So keep it to the agenda topics for this evening, please. Thank you.
Okay. And we have one hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney here, where you're going to only need seven minutes because Mary's not here this evening unless someone else is out there and chimes in. Very good meeting. Two tough topics. Absolutely. Lots of opinions on all this. A couple of comments off the bat. I felt all of you, and I say this sincerely, had excellent questions, lots of great thoughts. I look out, or I look forward to calling and chatting about some of your comments and a good solution for the future, which I'll talk a little bit about this evening. I did check with King County Interjurisdictional Team on something I heard a couple of weeks ago. And according to them, by the way, ADUs in every jurisdiction do count to that community's growth target. So if I got that wrong, I do, but I think that's correct. Another thing, I've been in residential real estate a long time. I'm going to state an issue and a good solution, in my opinion, or at least a option for one. A two unit condominium program of a lot and an ADU is a, is a nightmare. Put yourself in either owning the house or the ADU size unit. And you don't get along with part of your, you know, bylaws and the declaration that created the condo. And you don't agree. You, you, you can't resolve issues. It's very tough. I suggest doing what Seattle did. They came up with sort of an L zoning that allowed for creative lot lines to be created and sold to different units within what was a lot, takes away virtually all the problems. All right, now in, into comments. I think something that is critical based on what we heard tonight about the regional affordability for housing at zero to 80% AMI. What are the specific AMI gaps within Sammamish in those three categories? And what are the specific gaps regionally that we're being asked to compare? We need to know both. And there are six growth buckets to plan for, in my view. Two are regional. Regional Office of Financial Management, regional growth, historic growth targets. Second thing that's coming that is regional in this cycle is our share of zero to 80% AMI regionally. But the other four are all in internal growth buckets. One of those four is what are our own internal needs from zero to 80% AMI? What are our internal needs for 80% AMI and over, which is over six sevenths of our households are in those economic categories? We don't know any of those gaps. Internal workforce housing and internal demographic needs over life. By the way, PSRC has an outstanding couple of documents on how to plan for housing gaps for, for all demographic needs. Let me go back and circle back on something. I read a survey that was done or a study that was done for the city of Corvallis, about 60,000 people. And they were studying workforce house, workforce housing in, in their city. They found about half of the workforce housing would want to live there if they could and half did not. We have about 4,000 of those. The reason the half would not is that a lot of times the housing they could buy in the city was less than they could get outside the city. It was interesting. But it, it was roughly half and half. In the PDFs I sent today, I'd like you to take a look at your convenience on PDF B, page 19. It's the first comp plan. That's the one time in all Sammamish housing policy documents that actual gaps were identified in the way Department of Commerce, the Housing Needs Analysis in King County asked them to be identified. And on that page, we had three sets of gaps that looked at Sammamish housing units and then Sammamish households by income. And in 1999, we knew precisely that we had 890 housing unit gaps for zero to 100% AMI. I ask, what are gaps for all income levels? And it's really not that hard. You take a look at the incomes of all 22,500 houses and you figure out what the houses are worth and you compare them in AMI income bands of less than 30%. That's missing. That's essential. Also doing demographic gaps, actual numbers, not it looks like or it appears, what are they? It doesn't mean they'll all be met, but we've never had the data. It's time to get that. The other thing I'd like you to take a look at is PDF G. That's something we turned into the city back in 2016. We took a stab at identifying all gaps based on three 2010 documents during the comp plan process. And we could identify over eight to 16,000 housing unit gap for all economic and demographic groups with only partial data and without Clahani. Also in that same PDF G pages six through nine, strongly encourage you to read the housing policy on rethinking stewardship and legacy in Sammamish. The last thing in PDF G is the Fair and Peer Study that shows how the community can add a significant number of internal gaps in town center without going over the traffic limits in the preferred alternative of the town center plan. So these are some of the solutions that exist. We need to get off of regional affordability. It's important, but it's one sixth. We need to plan for all the buckets. Take a look at that stuff. Let's talk about it. And I suggest getting this data and then doing the survey over and informing our residents of where everything really is and the consequences of doing it or not, and see what the survey says. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and we have no more hands raised.
Great, thank you. I'll ask you, Evan, anything else for the evening from staff?
Yes, very quickly, I want to plug an exciting event we have on the horizon. As kind of a big kickoff event with, for community engagement for the comprehensive plan, starting November 3rd, we have our Planning Summit Series. This will be a five night event and over the course of those five nights, we'll be talking about different planning topics, including visioning, housing, our mixed use centers and transportation. And the idea here is to touch on these, these topics at a kind of 101 level introductory to inform and educate everyone and take some feedback and questions from the community. The first event is in two short weeks, November 3rd, and the kickoff will be a hybrid event here in council chambers and also virtually, and then the rest will be held virtually. You can learn more and register, register for the events at envisionssammamish2044.org, which is also our project page for the comp plan update, which is now live. So exciting stuff coming your way. That's it.
Great, thanks. I'll just remind everybody to take a look at the calendar for upcoming meetings and I'll express my thanks to everyone for hanging in there for a little extra time tonight. I can feel myself getting tired, so I think it's probably time that we adjourn. Would somebody move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move. Second.
It's been moved to second. We adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those know, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.